Hey. Sent to the representative and posted on the board in Barrow Hall. First item on the agenda is the public comment period. If anyone would like to speak to the commissioners, please note there's five minute time. Is your. For anyone that wants to speak to the commissioners. Yep.
Okay. Anyone in the room? Before we go to those on Zoom. Okay, anyone on Zoom, raise your hand or type in chat if you'd like. Please.
Okay, seeing no one. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve chapter 159 CCBM ABDPM. Um, this is a grant for the police department. The reason we're putting it on this evening is it has to get put into the state system the way they do it now. And in order for it to fulfill so that we are spending the money this year like this grant requires before they'll give it to us. Um, we have to pass that tonight. So this is a grant for $2,000. This is actually, so. Those that aren't aware, chapter 159 is the budget mechanism to bring in funds and change your budget when you receive grants throughout the year. So it actually brings it in and sets it up as a revenue and also an appropriation.
Any restrictions?
For that specifically for that grant.
It can only be used for that purpose that Chief Cutler and I wrote it for.
Okay.
Yep, yep, but we can share that citation with you. This is for the signage, right, Chief? Official pedestrian signage or traffic calming signage, yes. So you can't use it for anything other than that.
No, no, that's. Oh, in front of the high school?
Yeah.
Oh, that crosswalk?
Yes.
Okay. In the flashing light crosswalk, but it can't be used for the flashing light crosswalk at Hopkins that was damaged.
And that's already been purchased.
Yeah, we're waiting on it.
All right, thank you.
How hardy are these things? I mean, it just, it seems like these things are just always broken and some state of back order.
Yeah.
You're not wrong, Frank.
You're not wrong. We have to be fiscally responsible. There's a nice, the fifty, sixty thousand dollars. That's the five to six thousand. They last as long as they last. The one in Hopkins and Burrow, the commissioners I know was talking about was hit by a car. They're really big.
All right.
From the resolution, motion?
Second.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Sadeau?
In favor.
Commissioner Bianco Besen.
In favor, thank you.
The next item is a resolution to amend a resolution out of our last meeting. The budget transfers were put in the wrong direction. So you need to correct that. They can be processed properly. By the motion.
Motion. Second.
Reading on that motion, Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Sadeau?
In favor.
Commissioner Bianco Besen.
In favor.
Okay, the next item is to discuss use of borough property. You know, something things here. The first is a lunar new year celebration sponsored by Human Relations. They're asking for full use of Kings Court on Saturday, February 1st, and from 12:30 to 6:30 PM. This will be in partnership with HMS and HMHS Asian American Culture Clubs. They're going to have information tables, performances, and anyway throughout the day.
Only concern I have from the notes that were sent was the photo booth celebrating all of the lunar characters. If they could just double check that it's appropriate to celebrate them all and not just the character of the upcoming year.
Thank you.
Sure. And this was already reviewed by PD and I think DPW as well. I'm great. I'm good with it.
Frank, you good?
Well, yeah.
Next item is a, is the last of, I think, the school visits for the firehouse. They're scheduling that for June 4th from nine AM to 10 PM. And then so from 10 PM to 10 PM.
Good, Chief? Uh, June 4th, Chief, and June 5th. This is central school. It's like their elementary school field trip visit about 25 children.
Right? Next item is Winterfest. Michael is here. We approved Winterfest, I believe, at our last meeting or the meeting before. And there are some things that you want to discuss with the commissioners?
Correct. Since the last meeting, events committee met to just add some other elements to Winterfest. On the Sunday, we would like to add an ice carving, a live ice carving in Kings Court. This would involve use of electricity, preferably from the gazebo, as well as like some barriers to ensure safety. It's relatively cost affordable and we think it would add a nice ending to the overall Winterfest activity.
Have you done this in the past? I mean, we had the ice sculptures in the past, but are they done there?
We've had the ice carving done in a studio, like, you know, the ice carving studio. We haven't had, we haven't hosted live carving. I think other organizations have, but it's never been partnership for ads, not.
School district did wood once, did the wood carving of the Bulldog. Took a couple days.
That's awesome. Yeah, I stayed in ice carving in Kingsport just before, the year before COVID, I want to say maybe nine, maybe January of 19. Um, and it was like really fun to watch because he, he does it over a period or they do it over a period of several hours. So people can come and go and that's the idea is like foot traffic is generated. And then at the end.
There are two different ones that time.
Oh, you're right.
One in another location.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this would be frankly, the last years we've done it, we've had them dropped off by the artist and they're placed in specific locations. This addition would be, and this is paid for by partnership dollars, not borough budget, but it would be an addition of the live carving.
Electric chainsaw, not gas?
Ah.
All right, that's it.
Well, so, uh, there may be an amperage issue there, but it doesn't take much to trip that. So I would, you have to look at the, uh.
I was told 20 amps would be fine, but I'll double check it just to make sure.
Those things pop all the time, so.
Well, I think he's using the gazebo and the trees.
Okay.
I think the gazebo might be a little stronger.
Okay, all right. I don't have a problem with it. Just check that.
Okay.
Really. Not the choice that doesn't work.
Um, the other addition was that we have a business in town who's looking to give away free soda. And with their, part of their own ice carving, like they've done this before, but we want to present it to you in case you have any concerns or reservations.
Sounds fat.
That's all that's going to be in it, right? No alcoholic beverages? Yep, don't want to get dinged on ABC license.
And I think the issue there, Michael, and the reason why is it because it's the sculpture is like right next to their business, but the lines for, for it would be in the sidewalk. I think that's why they're.
I think so, yes. We can talk about, you know, we can direct the sidewalk in a place where it's not getting in the way of ADA access.
Okay. Good.
Everything okay, commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. Next one is the Girl Scouts. The past couple of years, we have approved them for use of Kings Court on various days on the weekends. They are now asking for Kings Court on Saturdays in front of Happy Hippo, Inkwood Books on Sundays and in front of Kings Road Brewery on Fridays. They have spoken to each of the three entities and the three entities are okay with them having a table in of their. Business. And the commissioners are okay with it.
Two okay.
Um, do we know which troop or troops? What I don't want to create is a situation where one or two troops.
So last time what they did is a, one person comes to us, but they are, they are setting it up for all of the troops. So each of the troops had designated times and I think this allows each of the troops more access than previous.
Do we have room on the sidewalks for ADA accessibility?
I think.
In front of each of the locations?
So. You should. In front of Happy Hippo. As long as you're doing it on the Kings Highway side, not the Haddon Avenue side. You should on, in front of the brewery. Um, because you have, there's no tree in front of them, so you have the access all the way to the street. Um, and I'm trying to think down by Inkwood should be okay. It's just they have.
Rather wide area here.
Yeah, because their window doesn't pop out, so it's flat against the building, so they should be okay there too. Yeah, because Inkwood's had stuff out for, um, sales and stuff at different times. Yeah. Yeah, so you're fine in all three locations. Are we okay approving all of them?
Yeah, I have no reservations.
I'm fine.
Yeah, we might just want to think for the new year, what happens if every other organization in town asks us to do the same thing because I'm not comfortable like. Prioritizing.
It was quite an extension of request.
Yeah, and I don't want to find us as commissioners and the community at, at whole, like at odds over who gets. Public sidewalk access. So maybe we could develop a policy for next year, but I'm, I'm fine to honor this one.
The last one is just an FYI at this point. Um, the environmental commissioner is working on their. They are looking to have those activities on May 3rd, Saturday, May 3rd. They are looking for Kings Court and Library Point, but they don't have details yet, so there's nothing to fully approve at this time.
No. We have to plan the wellness festival and Garden Club already asked for Kings Court for May 3rd.
Yeah.
We promised them at the last meeting. Um, I'm fine to work with them on anything they want to do to like incorporate them for sure. But we, just last work session, we gave Garden Club. That date.
Okay.
Joanna, can you make a note to connect with Jamie on that? Thank you.
Hi, and that is it for use of borough property. Next item on the agenda to talk about is Baptist church agreement. This is an annual agreement that just automatically renews and has been in place for quite some time. We looked at, when we did the evaluation of the parking fees that we were charging. We made the decision to keep this agreement because it was financially, it made financial sense for us. Whereas the Presbyterians no longer made sense for us to keep that agreement. They are asking for a small increase to go from receiving $2,000 for use of their entire parking lot, which is actually half of that lot back there. Um, uh, up to $2,400.
Revenue generated support.
Much more than what we're paying them, yes.
One time fee?
Yes, well, it's, it's a one time, it's an annual fee, so it's.
But paid in one, paid in one payment, okay. Save my hand from signing.
Yep, paid once, paid in one payment a year. Yes. For next year. Well, yeah. Yeah. Okay, the next item on the agenda, it's that time of year. We received an adjustment to pay professional services. We see three. Each tour, the auditor, we only receive one. Labor council received four. Development council will be receiving four and risk management will receive three. Generally have those discussions in closed sessions to determine which of one you wanted to pick.
In bold is our current?
Our current. We do want to have a conversation with you about, enclosed about the.
Okay.
Circumstances you should be aware of.
All right.
Okay, next item on the agenda then is the meeting schedule for 2025. Kind of provided you all of the meetings. Obviously, there's some questions that have to go back to some of the boards with some of the holidays, the Jewish holidays in October. One question I had. May 13th, I think it's Tuesday, so, and I don't think it's a holiday, but I think that first May date should be switched to May 12th. Yeah.
Yeah, I have it on the 12th, so I had put in 13. Just making sure to know that.
And then in October, you have October 9th, that's Wednesday. So that's supposed to be the 27th. There's other, any vacations you're aware of, as I look at Frank?
January 13th.
What, January what?
13th.
Uh, February 24th, I'm traveling for work.
I am probably out of. Town on June 9th. But not sure. They haven't announced dates for conference. Night. It depends. It, I'll let you know as soon as I know. And I asked a question if this binds a future commission from making amendments. If it does not, so good.
No, because what you'll, what you'll find is as we go through the year, something will pop up and depending if it is a work session or an action meeting. Whether or not we try and change it, we generally, for work sessions, we try and have all three commissioners here, action meeting, it kind of depends what's going on.
Sure.
You can have one with just two.
Okay.
Try to be nice to each other.
Sure.
You know.
Absolutely. We need to be here.
Yeah, because sometimes even when you're traveling, Zoom is super convenient, but not if you're like six hours different or something, so.
Frank, when are you leaving?
Uh, the 9th, returning G15.
Do you guys want to switch the work session to the 6th?
Okay, with the 6th.
I don't have anything on 6th.
Actually, yeah, no, that works better for me. The 13th, I probably wouldn't have been able to make either.
I'm fine with the 6th.
How you do with the 6th?
Yeah.
We'll change the work sessions from the 13th. Do we want to change the February meeting? That's an action meeting?
Yes, please. That's, yeah, February 24th.
Um. When are you leaving?
I'm just leaving that weekend and away that week, so I should be here any other dates in February for me. Um, like the 17th can work.
17th is president's day.
18th.
So it could be the 18th.
Tuesday, I've got zoning board.
On the.
The 18th, sorry.
And you said you were out the week of the 24th? We can move the work session to the 3rd and put the action meeting on the 10th.
I can do that.
Or you can do the action meeting on March 3rd. Yeah. You can ask him. If you want it.
Is there any timeline we need to commit to in February though?
Don't think so.
I'm, I can do either the 3rd and 10th. Or.
On the 3rd.
Or March 3rd, yes.
Same here.
Guys, tell us what you want.
That's fine.
Third and 10th?
Yeah.
The March 3rd will be the February action meeting.
March 3rd is the work session. I'm sorry, February, February 3rd is the, is the work session and February 10th is the action meeting. All right, then we have June 9th. Do you want to move it to June 2nd or you don't have, why don't?
It's a work session. It's okay.
No, no, that's one of the ones you don't want.
Until it gets a little.
Yeah, I was gonna say if you.
Yeah, we can, we can judge when it's a little closer. Yeah, I might, I might not have to leave until Tuesday.
Okay, so why don't we leave June 9th for now? Um, and then we can address it as we get closer.
That would be good, only because I don't have my schedule for June yet.
And honestly, it's, there's an election before that.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Well played, Sharon.
Sorry.
Thanks for the reminder.
Nothing, you know, meant, it's just, uh. We can take a look at it again.
Election is May 13th? Is that correct?
We're speaking Tuesday.
Oh, I thought it was the second Tuesday.
Yeah.
Well, is it second? Sorry.
Second Tuesday, 13th, okay.
Okay, no, work session is the day before. Okay, any other changes to the, to your calendar?
No, not at this time.
Okay. We will work with these committees to hammer out some of the other issues. Uh, next item on the agenda is the draft agenda for next Monday. That timing here will do a bunch of substantial matters to help clean out. Um, we, and our shared service agreement with Maple State, we're bringing on one additional person. They have a very large project that's going on there. Um, so they've agreed to pay additional money to have an additional shift of work to complete that job. Uh, we, Tom Colavecchio, our longtime tax assessor is retiring. And Judy has been training, Shoemaker has been training to take over as his replacement. She has worked alongside him for years. And she passed her test and is all set and ready to go, so she will be appointed at this meeting. Um, you have Jeff and the Hip of Madness and Mr. Sadeau, that is all you.
Yes. They throw, they throw great dinners.
Okay, any other questions about, oh, one last thing we do have on there. Um. Actually, there's a couple of things in closed session, so talk about those later. There might be two additional resolutions on the agenda. So any other questions about the agenda? Seeing none?
Nope.
All right, I just wanted to give you an update on a couple of things. Paul, uh, they have started, um, the asbestos removal. All the asbestos plaster ceiling and insulation has been abated throughout the classroom from the hall base.
Sure.
I think that was me. I won't move again.
They are working on the tile and the mastic. They should actually probably be today potentially. Um, they have broken this down into like three phases and, or maybe it's just two phases. But they, at the end of each phase, TTI goes in and actually does make sure that it's clear. Once those tests come back that it's clear, then those areas will be opened up, but meantime, each section while they are working is completely encapsulated. Um, so you will start to see an encapsulation of some of the outside structure happen as we move forward because. It was the gutters, I believe. Had asbestos in them, so they'll be removing those. Um, so that is working. They are, they are on schedule and, um. Things are going well. The other update is on Boxwood redevelopment.
One quick thing, but when will that move, uh, move to the next phase? That's basically internal and.
So in January, we'll start pulling together and probably request to go out to bid for the removal of the outside structure. I think they are scheduled to be done. Mid to late February, I think is when this project will be done. And then that way we'll be able to potentially be ready to just start with the next contractor as soon as this is done.
Okay.
So. Um, Boxwood Hall, the redevelopment has submitted applications for HPC and planning board. HPC is, is Wednesday, is HPC? Yeah, this Wednesday, so they will be in front of HPC this Wednesday. They will be on the January planning board meeting. If they complete HPC in one meeting. Then they will also be hearing that portion of the application at the planning board in January.
Okay.
You say as if it's a very long HPC process. Does this have anything to do with the investigation of the one section of the building being maybe the oldest structure?
I'm not aware of that. It's just, it tends to be with HPC with some of these. Structures that it takes longer than one meeting. So.
I'd rather than get it right than get it fast.
So, um. And then once they complete both of those, then we have to ship over. Um, and that is the last item on the agenda before closed. We do have a couple of items in close contractual items and. Proposals. And appointments. There any, anything else you guys want to talk about in open?
Thanks for the update on cool.
Okay.
Actually, one thing I always. Is there any way to speed up that RFP process? Because what I want to have is the trades getting based upon sample work, which is going to be more expensive than parts yet. So if it goes out in January, post for 30 days, get results.
It's, usually we can, we can have them out for just as long as, about 10 days.
Okay.
For a project like it's, I'm sorry, it's not an RFP at the bid, so bids have to be out for 10 days. So we put the bid out, they come back in, we should be able to award in February. In the bid, we would actually put that we want them to start. As soon as this other project is done, which is submitted to be X date.
Okay.
Um, so that's what we did with, with this one. We gave them a very strict timeline as to when we wanted them to start.
And you have a budget target, but.
Three remaining months. So.
So that's on the street, so they get bids and.
Yep. So, um. You know, hopefully everything, you know, we, it was this time of year, it's better going out because they're slower than they will be later.
Frank, you had mentioned at the last meeting, uh, the end of leaf season, there are tons of piles. Are they actually going to do spot removals or is it over, over?
So it's, it's moved.
So we're doing some spot. Technically, leaf season is over as of tomorrow. We are going to be doing some spot removals because people.
Like in the Monday trash route, probably.
People didn't realize that, didn't realize third rounds.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we're not out doing a full.
Great.
Would love to hear what made it so much faster besides weather this year.
Weather.
The drought.
The drought, sure. Leaves were light, they weren't heavy.
I mean, so.
It never froze.
So.
The trees weren't surviving as well, so they dropped.
Oh.
Yeah, and essentially we were doing a leaf route, I'm sorry, we were doing. Leaf collection essentially in one week for the two, first two runs, just about. First, the two first two runs, just about now.
A week and a half.
About a week and a half, whereas like a third run, we had a couple days of rain, that was like. Like two to three weeks, so if you have a lot of rain and stuff like that, it extends it a lot longer. Conversely, we got through it quicker than part of this one, we're going back forth, the Monday is like, as soon as that they were done, that's when all that wind came and the rain, and like, there was a huge.
Sure.
Drop the following days. Go back quickly and knock out the ones on on Monday, but I mean, I'm at Thursday route and. Where my yard is now is where it is every year at the end of leaf season, there's some left over, my neighbor has a tree that is knocking drop sleeves for another two or three months, that's what happens every year and life goes on, so.
Always spring.
And again, one of the things we talked about is as an offset, because we actually got done for the first time in. A very, very long time. You know, we had stopped doing veg waste pickup because we needed all those that manpower. We might be able to add another one or two of those in the next couple of months if necessary.
Any other towns need to lease our leaf pickups, are they behind or are they?
Don't know. And usually, it's it's not just the equipment, it's usually the manpower.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, the seasonals. Yeah, that's always a gamble, when you bring them all, but you can get them, you're getting against other municipalities for seasonal, it's going to lock it down. But one thing we're gonna have next year, actually, it's probably done next few months or after leaf season is a, uh, talked about before, but a single. A, uh, single person operated vehicle that has like a boom on it, where you can kind of swing it out, lift up, so. I kind of envision that before the main months, you can kind of maybe get that out and just doing sweeps, almost like a like a street sweep, picking them up. And then after the end of leaf season, maybe have that one go around for the next couple of weeks, you're just one person doing it, just, you know, picking up along the way. But we'll have to do that and plan next year. What's that?
After we see how it works.
Yes.
We should have it for spring cleanup.
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to open to the press for conversations and then go into close session? Sure. Anyone from the press have any comments, questions?
On Instagram, speaking for, since I just.
Yeah, in conjunction with the county, they've moved on the crosswalk eventually. Right now, the crosswalk enters into somebody else's driveway, so they're actually moving that and then the. In conjunction with the county, a flash of lights. It's could be pressure to rob us, the other side, right now, it's on Perry Hill side of the.
Still.
So.
So we hope to award demolition potentially in February with potential start in March or April.
That's true, another story we're doing, but. On Saturday, the.
I mean, it's basically, um. It's a county initiative where they're also looking for, uh, volunteers and both private municipalities, that sort of thing, so we had. We have one truck there or two trucks there?
One.
Just one truck there and a crew to help out. Uh, I'd stop by, you you could not walk out there, but I took pictures of it, there were, you know, municipalities, private crews, uh, all taking down the trees, basically, it's just the initiative to. Uh, improve the health, you know, remove dying trees or dead trees, that sort of thing, and then ultimately. You know, replace with that with healthier trees or let, you know, healthier trees thrive there, and I don't know what the total. Removal was or how many people participated, it was a lot, I mean, there were a lot of people show up there, you couldn't really get access to it. I see a link somewhere on the county, well, I'm not sure if it's still there, but there was a link on the county website, uh, that kind of explained the whole. The day and what they were looking for.
So.
So the. Sorry. So the one. There was one motion which. Did not move forward because of inaction, so. That was to adopt the recommendation or not adopt the recommendation planning board. There was also a second one. That similarly had to do with adoption of redevelopment agreement, neither of those two, as you know, passed. I anticipate that they will be agenda items, something similar will be agenda items next week, you know, last meeting of the year 16. And there'll likely be some action at that point in time, but I can't predict, you know, what would that actually be? For sure to answer your question, yes, I anticipate something will be there next week.
And certainly.
Not after.
You mean the actual request or the response, the response?
You have any problem with those? I don't see.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
All of them?
We may follow up requests because we may have to redact, there might be some financial information, sometimes they'll submit W9 or tax ID number or something along those lines.
See something like that in there, yeah.
We've got, we've got to redact that, so. So we've got to take a look, we just can't say here.
Thanks, Molly. You need a motion?
Anyone else?
Oh, okay.
Emily, do you have any questions?
No, no questions from me, thank you so much.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to go into close?
Motion.
Going on that motion, Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
President Seidel?
Favor.
Commissioner Bianca Bevins?
Favor, thank you.